A quorum is present. I will now call this meeting to order. It is 5:25 PM. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. I will now turn the floor over to Mr. Ben Poppy, Chief Financial Officer, who will present a budget workshop.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Moore. We're bringing in the board workshop number four this evening. And here's the agenda that we'll go off of, just reminders that have already happened. New information since the last budget workshop in June, and then the updated budget assumptions, and then the projected budgets, and then next steps for budget adoption. Alright, so thank you to the board for approval of the 2% general pay increase. And this allowed the starting teacher salary for teachers and nurses to be $65,500, and all experienced returning teachers to receive an increase of $1,350. And then employee benefits, the TRS Board in early May did approve the updated health insurance rates, which increased, varied between 17 and 25%. Then out-of-pocket expenses or deductibles that increased depending on the plan you're on varies from 200 to 550. And new information, we didn't receive the estimated certified values from the Harris County Appraisal District on July 25th. And it came in just over $12 billion, just a slight decrease from last year. We will, are expected to receive the final values no later than the 25th of August. And this does not change any impact on revenue. Any decrease on certified values would just increase state money, and then any decrease on certified values, vice versa. Alright, and these are the budget assumptions. Average daily attendance, just over 19,000. We did update with the certified estimated values of just over $12 billion. And then we'd have an updated tax rate adoption estimate of 1.17191. There's no change to the maintenance and operations tax rate. There will be a slight increase to the debt service tax rate, and that's just due to the bond passing this past May. And then just the updates on campus and department allocations, and then the amount we spend on security, and then lifecycle management. Alright, and so this is the general fund budget. Just a slight decrease of a deficit of $9.4 million. Back in June, we estimated $9.5 million. This will be the first time that you see the child nutrition budget. And this will just be in line with our spend-down plan, as you can only have so much fund balance in the child nutrition fund. And so they are estimating capital outlay of $850,000, and spending down some of the general, some of the child nutrition fund balance. And then the debt service budget is pretty straightforward. This is just to allow us to make the principal and interest payments on our bond payments, and it's a balanced budget. This does factor in the increase on the debt service tax rate of just right at 4 cents. And then next steps. We have sent the notice in for this Thursday to be in the North Channel Star on August 15th for the notice of the budget and tax rate adoption to be presented to the board on Tuesday, August 27th. And then we will present all three budgets that are required by law, the general fund, child nutrition fund, and the debt service fund. And then we will expect it to proceed no later than August 25th from the Harris County Appraisal District, the certified tax roll. And then on September 1st, following budget adoption, campuses and departments will be able to spend on the new budget for the new budget year. And then we'll come back to the board for approval in October for the tax rate adoption. Now at this time, this is budget workshop number four. We will come back on the 27th of August for actual adoption, pending any questions. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poppy. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:29 PM. Call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by Sections 551.001 through Section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting the board will now be held. The time is 5:35 PM. Motion is adjourned, and the board is now in open session. The time is 5:58 PM. I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I know Asparza moved we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
All in favor? A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with zero abstentions. A quorum is present. I will now call this public hearing to order. The time is 5:59 PM. Ms. Holly Malloy, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Support, will provide the annual performance report for the district's optional flexible school day program for the 2023-24 school year. She will review the purpose of the program and the application for the 24-25 school year. This is a Texas Education Agency requirement.
Good evening, President Hernandez and Board of Trustees, Dr. Moore and Cabinet. Tonight I'm going to review for you our optional flexible school day program, our report from last year, and then later on in the meeting you'll be asked to approve our application for the 24-25 school year. Our program allows, this program allows our district to provide flexible hours and days of attendance in order to decrease the number of drop-offs and increase our student graduation rates. So this includes kids that are maybe low on their core course credits, in danger of dropping out, or have dropped out. We serve students from Galena Park High School, North Shore Senior High, NRCT Early College High School, using these flexible arrangements. And they include credit recovery at their home campus, night school, which is located at Zoots, Accelerated Center for Education, our ACE program, a combination of day and evening classes, and flexible hours and days. Our program participation summary for this last year, so using the optional flexible school day program, we served 125 students. We had 254 credits earned, and we had 18 night school graduates. We say that our optional flexible school day programs give students the power of yet. So instead of them saying, "I don't have enough credits to graduate", it's "I don't have enough credits to graduate yet." So board, do you have any questions? And I need to ask the public, I want to know if you have any questions?
I just have a comment. I think that it works very well when we do credit recovery, but on the campuses, and that's what we're offering, and I really, really appreciate that. Instead of kids having to come all the way to the Zoots, it really, really helps.
We do, we do get them across the summer.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. The public hearing is adjourned. The time is 6:01. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, August 12th, 2024, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is 14705 Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas 77015. The time is 6:02 PM. I want to welcome the members of the audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order issued on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking, and that all cell phones are turned off or on silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per policy BED Local may address the board regarding matters of concern or interest to the district other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions or opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of speakers. Please understand that a lack of the response from the board member does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The Vice President of the Board will be designated timekeeper. Dr. John Moore, will you please step up to the podium?
I'm gonna do it from right here, if that's okay, where I can protect the audience. I want to just take a few minutes to thank Mr. Noe Asparza for being our board president last year. I have a little presentation of a gavel for him. So Noe, if you'll please join me right up here. Could we give Noe a hand for his service to the Galena Park Independent School District? Y'all know he makes a lot of money doing this. I told him not to spend all his money in one place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Stephanie Noriega, will you please step up to the podium?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, Dr. Moore. My name is Stephanie Noriega, Chief of Communications at Region 4 Education Service Center. And I am so proud to be here tonight to present Dr. John Moore with an award honoring his achievement in being named the 2024-25 Region 4 Superintendent of the Year. Congratulations, Dr. Moore. You're so deserving of this recognition. And we will be cheering you on as you represent our region proudly later this month in the state competition interview. Kudos to you and your district for this amazing accomplishment. Region 4 is so proud of you. We wish you the best school year ahead.
You still got two minutes to open it.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. Tonight's invocation will be presented by me, Norma Hernandez, and the pledges of the American Texas Flag will be led by the North Shore Senior High School Air Force, JROTC. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags. Dear Heavenly Father, as we open this meeting of the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, enlighten our minds and stir our hearts that we are able to accomplish what is in the best interest of our students. As we begin a new school year, we are encouraged by the hard work of our administrators, teachers, and staff. Bring us together as we welcome our students and fill their minds with knowledge and spirit. In God's name we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Through this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
Alrighty. I'm sure most of you in the audience know we started school last Wednesday, and our staff's also tired. They're home taking a nap. They went to school all day today. And that reminds me of a quick story I'm gonna tell you before we get going. When I was a rookie teacher, my dad called me one day. I was teaching in Louisiana, and he had been in the school system for 35 years. And he said, "Hey, boy, after, after school today, I'm gonna come pick you up. We're gonna go look at a camp on the river. One day you'll inherit it. I want your opinion." I'm like, "Alright, Dad." So I'd been working all day, teaching out in the hot sun. I was a coach, and I came in about 6 o'clock, and I laid on the couch waiting on him. And y'all know when you lay on that couch after being out in that hot sun, what happens, right? Boom, I fell asleep. My dad knocked on the door, and of course, when I answered the door, my hair was matted on my face, and it looked like I'd been sleeping all night, right? And this is what he said to me. He said, "Boy, you got it all wrong." He said, "Those kids are supposed to go home and go to sleep because of you. You're not supposed to go home and go to sleep because of them. You need to reevaluate what you're doing every day. You're not keeping them busy enough, and they're working you to death." And so every year, I tell that story to our rookie teachers, because he's right. Obviously, all of our teachers hadn't figured it out, or they'd be here tonight, but they're home taking a nap, right? Okay, great. I'm glad y'all could come tonight, this rebate. Alright, we're ready.
Good evening. We would like to begin this evening's recognitions by announcing our new Board of Trustee Officers. Board President, Norma Hernandez, Board Vice President, Ramon Garza, and Board Secretary, Linda Clark Sherard. Please come forward for a photo. Thank you. Galena Park ISD would like to recognize some of our wonderful media partners. Please join us on stage as your name is called. Alan Jamel, freelance writer and contributor to the North Channel Star. Nate Griffin, sports analyst for KRIV TV and Fox 26 Morning News. And David Taylor, also with the North Channel Star. Randy McLevoy with Click2Houston, and Bob Slovak with ABC 13 could not be with us this evening due to their media schedules. All five media professionals have been named to the Texas Association of School Boards 2024 Media Honor Roll by Galena Park ISD. The Media Honor Roll recognizes media representatives statewide for fair and balanced reporting of news about public schools. Galena Park honors and thanks you for your continuous media coverage of great things that are happening in our community. Please accept these plaques from Galena Park ISD and certificates from TASB for your hard work. You are appreciated. And our final recognition for tonight, but first, student recognition of this school year. Galena Park ISD recognizes Cobb 6th Grade Campus Student Jacoby Johnson for his international works of service. Jacoby, please join us on stage. Would Jacoby's prior and new school leadership teams from Havred Elementary School and Dr. Gerald D. Cobb 6th Grade Campus please also join us on stage? This summer, Jacoby was a member of the Specialist Medical Outreach Team with Youth on a Mission Church of God. And Jacoby helped to provide medical assistance to over 200 residents of Guyana. The team checked blood pressure, completed dental extractions, and distributed eyeglasses. Jacoby, we are proud of your extension of service throughout international communities. Would his family please join us? Jacoby, would your family, would the family please join us for a photo? Would the family please join us for a photo? This concludes the recognition portion of the board meeting. Thank you.
Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member, and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I just want to welcome everybody back to a new school year. Hopefully, we have a successful one like last year. We're hoping for, well, I guess, good weather this year. We don't need no more power outage like last year. So just wishing everybody back and hope you had a great summer. I mean, it's, it's still summer. It feels fine. So be careful, be safe, and have an awesome year.
Ditto to what Ramon just said. And without calling any names, I would be remiss if I didn't say this, because it's been in my heart for a long time. Thank you, Noe Asparza, for a job well done. And I told my family this weekend, I said, "A lot of people call me Ms. Linda, but nobody can call me Ms. Linda like Noe Asparza." Thank you for this year.
We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time for you to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Dr. Anika Van Court, Executive Director for Secondary Staffing and Compliance, will present the Texas Association of School Board Policy Manual Update 123 and EIC Local, Academic Achievement Class Ranking, as presented for the Board of Trustees. Review and adoption at first and final reading.
Good evening, everyone. Update 123 includes revisions to legal policies based on legislative and regulatory changes. Changes to local policies offered for consideration address the following topics: Board members' training and orientation, conflict of interest disclosures, economic development, emergency plans, security personnel, technology equipment, other types of employment contracts, homebound instruction, and instructional resources and library materials. BBD Local, Board Members' Training and Orientation, House Bill 3033 authorizes the Attorney General to require board members receive training on Public Information Act if it has found that a violation occurred. And it's recommended that the language states clearly that the board cannot delegate the training to the PIA Coordinator. BBFA Local, Ethics Conflict of Interest Disclosure. What it is stating is that the board is recommending that the board changes the language to be transparent and avoid any appearance of impropriety in public dealings. CCGB Local, Ad Valorem Taxes, Economic Development. Substantial changes are recommended to remove provisions addressing expired laws to Tax Code Chapter 313 Agreement. CKC Local, C K C Local Safety Programs Risk Management Emergency Plans. There is a section of notice regarding violent activity. It's recommended to comply with legal requirements. Also, administrative procedures must be created to align with T E A's model standards. C K E Local Safety Program Risk Management Security Personnel. There were several revisions that were made to this to promote more compliance clarification with House Bill Thirteen. The change in a section is stating that assignments has been incorporated into limitations of non-school employment to account for possible off-duty officer used by both the district and other agencies. However, there is also a section on inter-local agreements that's been added to note that the district police officers will function within the scope of the agreement. The section of school resource officers now includes a subsection relating to jurisdiction and added on authority and duties. Other edits were also done to maintain consistency within the policy style. C Q C Local Technology Resources Equipment. This is a new policy that's recommended to meet the legal requirements of the board to adopt a policy effective to digital devices in a district. The policy language adopts the model health and safety guidelines developed by T E A and the Health and Human Services Commission, and clarifies that the superintendent must develop regulations and implementation. D C E Local Employment Practices, Other Types of Contract. There were revisions to the termination during contract term. It's recommended to specify that the employee may request a hearing before the board or appeal discharge during the contract period and differentiate between terminations during and at the end of the contract term. D C Local Compensation and Benefits, Leaves and Absences. Based on the information that was provided by the administration to address the requirements of House Bill Four Seventy-One, the revisions were recommended to add required provisions regarding line-of-duty illness or injury leave for police officers. D G B A Local Personnel Management Relations, Employee Complaints and Grievances. Extensive revisions to C K E Policy Series necessitated an update to this policy, and it wanted to accommodate the planned restructuring policy for D I A. It was revised to reference code in a policy to reflect the D I A series. No other changes were made aside from those. E E H Instructional Arrangement Homebound Instruction. The revisions to the Student Attendance Accountability Handbook prompted updates to the students to receive homebound services for psychological as well as medical conditions. The handbook also indicates that the weeks of confinement due to medical or psychological condition does not have to be consecutive to qualify. The policy language has been updated to reflect that change. E F Local Instructional Resources. This policy addresses instructional resources as being deleted. New local policies to address the instructional material and library library materials separately are included at E F A and E F B. E F Local, E F A Local Instructional Resources Instructional Materials. So it was moved to move the library materials along with the instructional materials to be under the same policy, which is E F B Local. And at the selection, a clarification was made to reflect that instructional materials must be chosen in accordance with stated objectives and administrative regulations, and can include the State Board of Education list. And at the reconsideration of instructional materials, the list of individuals who can submit a request for reconsideration has been revised. So the change was done in E F B Local, and if the district would like to expand the list, they can contact your policy consultant. E F B Local Instructional Resources. The recommended policy aligns with the Administrative Code of the New Collection Development Standards for School Libraries as a result, House Bill Nine Hundred. It asks you to review the policy, the location of the form, a formal reconsideration, the position title for the person responsible for appointing the reconsideration committee should be on there, as well as the number of days allocated for appointing the committee and providing the material for review to the committee. F N G Local Student Rights and Responsibilities, Student and Parent Complaint Grievances. There were extensive revisions to the C K E Policy Series and an update to the cross-reference in the list of the complaint process. Also, to accommodate the restructuring policy F F H, we've revised the reference to that code in this policy to reflect the F F H series. There were no other changes aside from those. G F Local Public Complaints. Revisions within the C K E Policy necessitated an update to the cross-reference in the list of complaint process. No other changes were made. E I C Local, which is the other one we're covering, Academic Achievement Class Ranking. The class rank calculation shall not include semester grades from a course that is retaken after a passing grade has been earned. That grade, the new grade, shall not appear on the transcript. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Van Court. We will now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve endorsing the nomination of Tony Hopkins, Friendswood I S D Board of Trustee for the Tasby Board of Directors, Region Four, Position Four C?
I, Jose Jimenez, move we approve endorsing the nomination of Tony Hopkins, Friendswood I S D Board of Trustees for the Tasby Board of Directors, Region Four, Position Four C, as presented.
I, Noe Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve naming Jose Jimenez as delegate and Amanda Erebia as alternate to the Twenty-Twenty-Four Tasby Delegate Assembly to be held on September the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve naming Jose Jimenez as delegate and Amanda Erebia as the alternate to the Twenty-Twenty-Four Tasby Delegate Assembly as presented.
I, Noe Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the board resolution authorizing the district to pay employees for the missed workdays or any work performed to directly mitigate the emergency closure on July eighth, twenty-twenty-four through Thursday, July the eleventh of twenty-twenty-four due to inclement weather conditions in accordance with the purpose and parameters outlined in the resolution?
I, Amanda Erebia, move we approve the board resolution authorizing the district to pay employees for the missed workdays or any work performed to directly mitigate the emergency closure as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Erebia and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the renewal for the period of September the first, twenty-twenty-four through September the first of twenty-twenty-five for general liability, auto liability, and physical damage, educators' legal liability, and crime insurance provided by the Texas Political Subdivision's Joint Self-Insurance Fund through an interlock agreement for an annual premium of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars?
I, Amanda Erebia, move we approve the renewal for the period of September first, twenty-twenty-four through September first, twenty-twenty-five for general liability, auto liability, and physical damage, educators' legal liability, and crime insurance as presented.
I, Noe Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Erebia and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and according to the instruction sheet for Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update One, Two, Three at first and final readings?
I, Jose Jimenez, move we approve the additions, revisions, and or deletions to the Tasby Local Policy Manual Update One, Two, Three as presented.
I, Linda Sherard, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Linda Sherard. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the revisions to District Policy E I C Local Academic Achievement Class Rank at first and final readings?
I, Linda Sherard, move we approve the revisions to District Policy E I C Local as presented.
I, Amanda Erebia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Linda Sherard and seconded by Amanda Erebia. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Noe Espaza, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Amanda Erebia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Espaza and seconded by Amanda Erebia. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to construction consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Amanda Erebia, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Noe Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Erebia and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Jose Jimenez, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. The following documents were presented to the board for information. Dr. Wanda Giaccona, Chief Administrative Officer, presented Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes from May of twenty-twenty-four. Number Two, Early Head Start Update and Fund Two-O-Five Expenditure Report Summary for May of twenty-twenty-four. Early Head Start Update and Fund Two-O-Five Expenditure Report Summary from June of twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Ben Poppy, Chief Financial Officer, presented. Number One, Tax Collection Report, May of twenty-twenty-four. Number Two, Tax Collection Report of June, twenty-twenty-four. Certification of Taxes Collection Rate. Twenty-Sixteen Bond Program and Facilities Construction Update. Twenty-Sixteen Bond Program Financial Report as of June the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. Federal Grants Received for the Period of September the first, twenty-twenty-three through August the thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Number Seven, Quarterly Investment Report for the Period of March the first of twenty-twenty-four through May the thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Number Eight, General Fund Budget Summary Report for the Period of September the first of twenty-twenty-three through May the thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is six thirty-seven P M.